Meeting of the Seaside City Council Assistant Agency to the redevelopment in order. It is Tuesday, January twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, five P. M. So roll call.
Council and agency member Miller?
Here.
Council and agency member Burks?
Here.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizola?
Here.
Mayor Protim and Vice Chair Pacheco?
Here.
Mayor and Chair Oglesby. Mayor Oglesby will be absent from today's meeting and Councilmember Miller will be joining us via Zoom. His address for his remote location is listed in the agenda and all votes must be roll call votes. You do have a quorum.
Thank you. And the mayor's at a very important meeting representing the city. And he has faced this council. Great job. Moving on, pledge of allegiance. Councilman Burks? Thank you. Okay, review of agenda. If there's any items that arose after the seventy-two hour posting down, if this is a point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda, a two-thirds majority of vote is required. Anything need to be added?
No changes to the agenda.
Great, thank you. Public comment. Number five, members of the public wishing to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on this agenda may do so during public comment period for up to three minutes. Public comment for presentations on this agenda are also taken at this time. Comments on specific items, agenda items are heard under that item. For the public comment, please state your name. So public comment is now open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Hello, council, everyone. My name is Linda Cunningham. I'm a member of the homeless committee, but I'm here speaking to you as a citizen, a private citizen in Seaside. I just came down. Del Monte from my house at American Tire looks great. The paint's on, it matches the shopping center across the street. I don't know if you've been up there, that looks great. The sidewalk wall at for the high school at Fremont and Monterey, I'm not, I say I haven't been by there today, but last night, like every day, whoever's lifting them rocks up and sticking them on. Thank you. It looks beautiful. And I'm sure that's very hard work because I'm sure every one of those rocks weighs a lot. And it looks beautiful. It matches across the street. I find, I found this goose excrement conversation fascinating. And one of the other things that's messy is the olives. I grew up in Phoenix, Tucson banned olives, they put out a lot of pollen. But I do know you can spray those olive trees and they will not produce fruit, which means no mess to clean up, nobody's going to slip and fall and sue the city, some poor person in a wheelchair doesn't have to give olive guts all over their wheels. They're just a mess. Spray the trees. I'm all in favor of it. I think you spray them twice a year, but they can be sprayed. I also found out real quick the other day when I was looking at the beautiful park between city hall and the libraries down at the library end. And I did not know this, I don't know if anybody else knows this, but July fourth, twenty twenty-six is a very special year for the city of Seaside. The city, the Seaside Kiwanis Club put a time capsule in place in July fourth, nineteen seventy-six, to be open July fourth in the year of twenty twenty-six. And I think this should be something that we do is open that time capsule. I think it'd be so cool. I mean, it was meant to be open next year, twenty twenty-six. I don't know who keeps track of those things. I saw it for the first time. I just want to make sure it's on somebody's calendar that we're opening that time capsule. It's like stuck in a rock to the left of the sign up there. I also wanted to commend once again our police chief. There was a story about, I believe that's called American Nightmare Dude. More convictions, something along those lines. I think it's fabulous. I think it's so wonderful. You reached out those people of your own heart to help them understand that police are good people. And it's a really hard time right now to understand that police are good people. And I want to thank you again for doing that. But I just can't believe how lucky Seaside is to have Chief Borges and all the people who work for the city of Seaside. I saw more fresh black pavement, there's striping, it's just all beautiful. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so very much. Any other public comment?
Diane, Diane Nielsen, you now have the floor to your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. I got a letter today from the city of Seaside and I was a little afraid to open it because, you know, it was going to be good news. I opened it and it is from the city manager and it's regarding the illegal fireworks prevention and enhanced enforcement. And I was thrilled that this letter has gone out to Seaside homeowners. This is an example of great communication and that we are, that we do, the city does mean what they say when all illegal fireworks are banned. I really appreciate the team that put this together and I, I just want to congratulate you for coming up with this idea. I mean, we should do even more of this with different codes and ordinances in our city. So people will be better informed and thank you again. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor Protim, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Great. So moving on to publicating communication, this is a time set aside for representatives of agencies to make brief comments. I don't see any public officials, representatives, so we're going to. Right. So moving on to our wonderful and exciting upcoming city events and community announcements. Now's that time, I believe.
Let's dip into this week's edition of Seaside City News, covering more of the events happening this June. Everyone's Harvest, in partnership with Farms Together, is offering free boxes of produce at the Seaside Farmers Market every Thursday. Please note that the extended market hours are now three P. M. to seven P. M. So mark your calendars and we'll see you out at Laguna Grande Park on Thursdays. Join FOSPA on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, at Havana Solis Park for a day of service and outdoor fun. For more information, including future workdays and locations, visit friendsofseasideparks.org. Pet owners and community members in Seaside, mark your calendars. On Saturday, June twenty-eighth, at eleven A. M., you're invited to a special celebration of appreciation for the ten-year anniversary of Pachetti Dog Park. Enjoy complimentary nail clipping for your furry companions, free festive bandanas, and yes, even free cake as a gesture of gratitude. Hope to see you out there.
The city of Seaside invites you to the Fourth of July Red, White, and Blues Celebration from eleven A. M. to four P. M. on the lawn at City Hall. Join us for free family activities, food vendors, free hot dogs for the kids, games, live music from the White Album Ensemble. Fireworks, alcohol, and smoking are prohibited. Just a reminder that the city has a zero tolerance policy against illegal aerial fireworks. If you light it, they will cite it. Help keep Seaside safe by reporting illegal fireworks by calling at eight-three-one-eight-nine-nine-six-seven-five-six. Let's celebrate a great day. The city of Seaside encourages the community to celebrate the Fourth of July with their family and friends safely and responsibly. Each July fourth, thousands of people, most often children and teens, are injured while using illegal fireworks. Despite the dangers of fireworks, few people understand the associated risks. Devastating burns, other injuries, fires, and even death. Illegal fireworks not approved by the state fire marshal are always illegal in the city of Seaside. They pose an incredible safety danger to the user, bystanders, and to personal property. Devastating building fires can be caused by illegal fireworks landing on rooftops, igniting roof materials. It is important not to use illegal fireworks and to be respectful of the community because an evening of celebration can easily turn into a personal tragedy. Illegal fireworks cause tremendous stress to our military veterans, our seniors, and pets. We appreciate your cooperation and wish you a wonderful Fourth of July holiday. We appreciate you tuning in to Seaside City News, where we work to include, innovate, and inspire. We'll be back with more exciting events to share with you this July. Until then, be safe, live fully, and enjoy all our city has to offer. Thank you, Seaside.
Thank you, Seaside. Just a reminder, the White Album Ensemble is a Beatles band. It's considered one of the finest Beatles bands in California. So they are top-ranked band. They sold out numerous theaters and I think you'll enjoy them. And then, because we're not meeting July third, remember Sunday Blues starts July thirteenth. Cade Bowler and Chris Kane, in kind of in honor of Joe Louis Walker, who was going to be the headliner but has passed away. And Joe, he was a Grammy Award winner. He was a Blues Award, National Award winner. He performed in Seaside at least five times, coming from Los Angeles, from here, very nationally recognized. So wanted, in honor, I guess, of his continued support of Seaside, just wanted to mention his name. Just to go, as we conclude this area, city manager, do you have any comments on public comment?
Not this time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, April, May, twenty twenty-five, House of the Month Awards Neighborhood Improvement Commission, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protim. This item will be presented by Dan Meewes, our assistant city manager.
Good evening, Mayor Protim, members of city council and staff. I am Dan Meewes, the assistant city manager. And I am the liaison to the Neighborhood Improvement Commission, who is responsible for the House of the Month Awards. I would like to call the chair of the commission down, Mr. Ray Reardon, to help pass out these awards for April and May House of the Month. So just one, in the background, is the House of the Month is an ongoing project for the Neighborhood Improvement Commission. It's created as one of their main duties prior to the recommending of projects to the T. O. T. allocations. So this was, you know, established and then they continue on to showcase the good work that the community does do in maintaining their homes. So for April, we have Orde Terrace Community and it is seven oh five military. I do not believe the resident is here for this one. This is a Miss Rose Langerhan. If she is here, great. If not, we will move on to the next one, but we want to make sure that we do. We do have a nice plaque that we were going to give to her with her award as well, a gift certificate to a local Seaside business. And then I'll let the chair and Ramona introduce our May home.
Hi, my name is Ramona. This selection was on the Orde Grove area. And we chose, I chose it because of the landscaping and how simple it was, relaxing, drought tolerant. And we don't choose based on how much money you put into your house, but to keep it neat and clean and simple is important. So that's why we all decided on this house. As well as the other one was more drought tolerant.
Richard Morrison, nineteen twenty-five grand view. Looks like it's not present.
Everybody want to be rich.
Yeah, really.
Well, we will make sure that they do get their awards. We did notify the owners of the home. We did get a notification that the one wouldn't attend tonight, but Richard did confirm at one point. But we will make sure that we pass this on. So we just want to make sure that we continue to recognize the residents that do good work. And Chair, would you like anything to say?
I would like to comment that we go around and we drive around, we pick these homes and we at least pick five from each little section we get assigned to. And it takes a few hours to drive around because you gotta, you pick a few and then you eliminate that one because you come up with the better one. So we tried to do it as fair as possible and then that's when we come back and vote it in the chambers. So, but we will always take outside nominations. So if you have one, send it our way. We'll go check it out. Thank you.
Just want to thank the Neighborhood Improvement Commission for all their hard work. I know it's, they do a great quality work, great team, and have an impact in the city. So we appreciate what you do. Item B is receiver presentation regarding Chartwell School. Danielle Peterson has the school outreach and family engagement and Councilman Miller initially brought this forward as a request. So thank you for being here. We're appreciative.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. It's good to see all of you again, many of you I'm very familiar with and who have been out to the school. I also see a summer student in the audience. As a reminder, my name is Danielle Patterson. I'm the proud head of school at Chartwell. I've been there since twenty seventeen, moved my family here for the position. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here and to share updates from the year. And I really appreciate that Alex was able, his daughter's attending Chartwell now, was able to invite us to share. I think as we become more active in the community, it's nice to be able to just talk through what we're doing so that you all are aware of that and able to see it throughout the year. And so we're not only serving students and families in Seaside, but also creating positive ripple effects across Monterey County and the state of California. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, Chartwell School is a school for kids with learning differences. It was founded in nineteen eighty-three specifically for kids with dyslexia. And now we serve a wide range of different needs, typically dyslexia and associated learning differences. After closing the school year, there's so much to celebrate. Our students are full of potential and have achieved incredible things, both academically and personally. And every day on campus reflects the vibrancy of their learning and growth. In addition, our incredible team has impacted education in amazing ways, and I'd just like to highlight a few of those things tonight. One of our longtime lower division teachers, Chris Ford, was recently honored with the Outstanding Teacher Award by the Rotary Club of Monterey with over 30 years of experience. She's a model of what it means to understand and uplift neurodiverse learners. She's just one example of the deeply committed educators that we have on campus. I'd also like to share a great example of our academic model, and that's our lightbulb marketplace. Our elementary students launch small businesses throughout the school year that are rooted in environmental connection and purpose, and they created meaningful products that developed business plans and raised almost $1,500 divided among next year's project, and then they decided as a group to donate that money to the SPCA. It's authentic student-centered learning in action, celebrating all of their amazing skills. We're also incredibly proud of Chartwell Students Art Exhibition currently on display at the Monterey Airport, titled Celebrating Neurodiversity Through Art. This public showcase reflects the students' depths, talents, and expressive voice of our students, and encourages all of, I encourage all of you to go visit it, it's pretty inspiring. On June 7th, we proudly graduated 16 seniors as the class of 2025, and collectively, they were accepted to 68 four-year schools and received over $6.9 million in scholarship offers. Our students will go to schools like Chapman, Loyola Marymount, RIT, University of San Francisco, and local institutions like MPC and Cabrillo. These outcomes are a testament to the power of specialized supportive education, meeting students where they are and challenging them to grow. So this is really where I want you all to hone in. When I joined Chartwell again in 2017, one of the goals of my now team, who has been there since that time, was to impact education at large. So we started the Chartwell Teaching Institute. Between 2019 and 2025, we have trained over 35,000 teachers across the state of California. And this is something that, just in Monterey Peninsula alone, we've trained 405 of their teachers, all at the primary and secondary level, and now moving into Salinas County. So I think it's important for you to understand that although we are serving students who are unable to be served in public settings, our goal is to impact literacy abroad. Okay. Currently, we have just about 192 students enrolled for next year. At capacity, we will be 215, which usually comes about the first month when students start school and have a tough time. And we serve students from across Monterey County and beyond, and they leave, whether they leave a couple of years after they've been with us or after high school, with confidence and tools for independence. And we're proud to be a school of choice for families seeking a different path, especially in the fabric of Seaside's educational system. As you know, Chartwell with the planning and permitting process for an exciting campus expansion project, initial approvals occurred at the Planning Commission meeting earlier this month. This is for the mid-campus development, and it will include strength-based learning center, maker space, and outdoor classrooms that tap into our students' special learning needs and strengths. And then lastly, we're right in the middle of our summer program. We have students from across the county for their science, tech, engineering, arts, and math, as well as reading and math intervention and enrichment. There are 100 students, K through 8, who are accessing the program. 75 of those students are not enrolled during the school year and just come for intervention during the summer. And we also have 10 students who are on campus for high school credit recovery. It's another sign of our growing reach and relevance. In closing, Chartwell's more than a school, it's a place of possibility. I invite all of you to come and visit. Every time people come, there's something new. It's for students, families, educators, and our broader community, and we're proud to be based here in Seaside, and we're committed to partnering with you to make a lasting and positive impact. I appreciate you giving me the time.
So very much. Do we have any questions? I know Councilman Miller brought this up initially.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you so much. Is Danielle still at the podium or the lectern?
She ran away.
Oh, okay.
She's back.
I'm back.
Oh, thank you. You know, I just want to say that, you know, we're dedicated, I believe that this council is dedicated to working with our schools, with all of the MPUSD schools and with your school. And so we're fortunate enough for this collaboration with you, and thank you for not just with my daughter, but with these children that don't have, or get left behind in our public schools because of their difficulties or their challenges, and you give them a place to go. And I really admire it. We've seen great success and just the activities that Chartwell's involved in. You know, I see them, I see Chartwell at city events, at the Girls on the Run most recently. So you guys are active in our community. We, I think, I hope that maybe even Chartwell can get more active, and maybe we can collaborate with you somehow with having students have some kind of government learning at City Hall, or we do park cleanups, but whatever we can do to help support you and support the school and along with all of our schools. So I just want to say that. Sorry I can't be there today in person to see you, but thanks for the presentation and really well done. We're honored to have you in Seaside. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilman, Councilman, no, no comment. Thank you so very much.
Say a comment.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation, just like Councilmember Miller mentioned. Seeing and visiting Chartwell, I've seen the impact you're having on the students and how a great learning environment it is for them. And I think, again, thank you for coming to the city of Seaside, giving us a presentation again. You're doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, item A, consent agenda. Approved minutes from January 12th, 10th, and June, I'm sorry, June 10th and 12th, 2025, special meetings. Item B, approved mayor's youth fund contribution quest of $3,000 from Boys and Girls College of Monterey County to assist with the costs associated with their eight-week youth summer programs. Item C, approved fees request from Palenque Arts Organization to use Laguna Grande Hall and Kitchen to hold their Annual Dia de los Muertos event on November 1, 2025, in the amount of $604.50. Item D, approved request from Monterey County Pops for their Labor Day concert at Seaside City Hall Lawn on September 1, 2025, for the amount of $5,686. Item E, adopted resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a one-year maintenance service agreement for city parks and facilities with hope services in an amount not to exceed Item F, adopt a resolution approving allocation of 0.081 acre feet of water per year from the city reserve to 1721 Del Monte Boulevard to support an expansion of existing Lexus and all their dealers. Item G, adopted resolution approving cooperative agreement between the city of Seaside and the Seaside Housing Collaborative to authorize the collaborative to pursue the development of affordable housing in two city-owned parcels located in 1,200 block of Darwin Street and the 1,200 block of Luzern Street. Item H, approve resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with built-in financial services to complete the comprehensive citywide fee study for not to exceed $29,995. Item I, adopt a resolution to authorize side letter amendments to the labor agreements and non-representative groups. Item J, adopt a resolution awarding constructive construction contract to Kramer Engineering for an amount not to exceed $699,978.94 for the San Pablo Avenue Traffic Common Improvements. Item K, adopt a resolution canceling the July 3 regular city council meeting. Is there anything on the council that wants to approve, I mean, to remove something from the agenda?
K.
K, okay, we're going to pull item K. Is there anybody from the audience that wants to pull anything?
Yep.
F. Okay. Anything else in the Zoom audience wanting to pull anything? Seeing none? Okay, so item F and item K has been pulled. And we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Just on the second, and just because I worked for the city during that time and when they did that report, so I just had some comments just for your awareness and all. Try to go over very quickly, but it's very important that we're aware as we go into this. I believe our city manager, staff, and council are wise people. I worked for the city during that time, and the economy and challenges are much worse economically than today. I believe council staff, council and staff at that time rushed to increase fees and revenues to pay for services, and I am thoroughly convinced that it was harmful, devastating to our youth, residents, homemakers, businesses, and community as a whole, no matter the best intentions. And they meant very well. It was just, we were in a big financial challenge, and they did the best they could, and I'm hoping the second time around, we study this. I want to make you aware, this recommendation and implementation in the goal of having fees paid for services was destructive to youth services, parents, caused layoffs for part-time staff, and reduced revenue in the recreation. I also remember homeowners were negatively impacted because fees stopped home improvements to increase fees, as well as the start of potential new businesses that were impacted due to significant fees. I hope when the report comes back, and I'm confident this council is wise, as well as our city manager, with potential new fees, and we are very cautious and deliberate and understand the people we serve, economic realities, diversity of our community, value, quality of life. Just in closing, I believe it's important to have a good balance of resident needs, host, and cost of services. I believe and expect we all want wide balance and putting our residents on number one priority. I trust we will make wise choices considering the results of the report. I will support this, but I am cautious. So I assume there was a first and second, we have to do a roll call vote? Is that correct? Your entire public comment, I'm sorry, public comment?
The public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor Protem, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment. Council and agency member Miller?
Aye.
Council and agency member Burks?
Aye.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizola?
Aye.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Pacheco?
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
That was a unanimous vote. Let's go back to item, let's do it in order, item F. You want to bring your concerns forward?
Mr. Mayor Protem, are you open to public comment for?
Yes.
The member of the public to?
Yes, that's, yes.
I'm Ray Reardon, and some of my neighbors that are still waiting for their water to be approved for their ADD or whatever they want to build, still being denied because we're saying they don't have enough water. I even submitted some paperwork to have a add-on done on my house, and I said, I was told I didn't have enough credits. So I know this is a business, and I'm sure they're going to make a profit on what they're going to build or do here. I'm sure they're not going to discount their cars to any of us. And one thing I'd like to know, how many gallons is .081 comes out to be per year? And how many add-ons we could do to homes to help out our low-income housing or rentals, number one? And number two, what are they going to use the water for? Bathrooms for their car wash, for things like that? I mean, we keep on saying how we need to help these people in this world, but here's Lexus, one of the highest-selling car dealerships, is asking for freebie, right? City's not getting anything, it sounds like, so. And a lot of people are spending a lot of money on water when they do get approved and do add-on. And it just doesn't smell right or sounds right for the city of Seaside at this time, unless I'm way out of line on this. But does anybody know how many gallons is .081 acre feet per year comes out to be? Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
I will call on our Economic Development Manager, Community Planning Manager, Andrew Meyer, to answer that question.
Yeah, thank you, council members, city manager. So first of all, with the ADUs, we are allocating water for those. So I signed off on the three water allocations today for ADUs, so I would encourage your neighbors to come down and talk to the planning department. I'm happy to talk with you after the meeting, yeah. Water is available for qualified residential additions. So again, we did create some programs a few months ago, the council did, to create that. The reason that the Lexus would need a water allocation is not because they're using more water, but because the water district calculates the amount of water based on square footage. So by adding square footage, they're expanding their showroom, they're adding in another area, and it doesn't actually increase the water usage at all, but because of the formulas that the water district uses, they need a water allocation. And the council previously, again, just a few months ago, set aside water into a number of different categories. So water was allocated for residential purposes, for Broadway and for the auto center. And so this would take, this would reduce the amount of water in the auto center from like 3.6 to 3.52 or something to that effect. It's a small reduction there. And yes, 0.081 acre feet is equal to 26,393.926 gallons, if that helps.
Thank you so very much. Is there any other public comment on this issue here? Seeing none? You kind of said no.
Ms. Clerk, did you call it for the online?
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor Protem, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the diocese for consideration and action.
Motion to approve item 8F.
Second. Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Council and agency member Miller?
Aye.
Council and agency member Burks?
Aye.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizola?
Aye.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Pacheco?
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item K, Mr. Councilman Miller, you pulled this, you have any comments, concerns?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So last year, under council member requests, I did request that we look at our July schedule because of this exact reason. July last year, we canceled meetings, moved meetings around. This year, again, we are canceling the first meeting a week before. I think that we should be more methodical about what meetings we're canceling and when, as out of respect for the council members, to plan accordingly, their assignments and other things in their lives. So I just don't feel this is appropriate, a week before canceling. Last year, when we had this discussion about canceling July, the council basically said, no, we have really important business in July. And I can understand that, and I can respect that position, so I'm ready to meet in July 3rd. I think that if we have a lot of things on the agenda, which we're moving forward, why are we canceling in July 3rd? What is the reason? So those were all my comments, and for those reasons, I will be voting no, but those were all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the community or Zoom friends?
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor Protem, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item. Mayor Pro Tim, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Okay, let's bring it back to the dais for action. Or comments?
Would you like to hear from the city manager as to any?
To the mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, council member Miller, for your feedback and input. This recommendation was from staff due to, this is the fourth meeting we have had in June due to the budget process, and we were able to accomplish some regular business items at those workshops as well as this evening. So, staff looked at the schedule upcoming and simply made the recommendation that other items would be easily postponed till the second meeting in July without jeopardizing any project schedules.
And thank you for that, that answer, that does answer my question. And that was my original concern, was that when we go through our budget cycle in June, that staff is being over, it has a lot on their plate during the June, end of June, middle of June, end of June. So, to give them kind of a legislative break in, you know, for the first half of July, I think it's important. And so, I continue to maintain the position that we should look at having some kind of break in our code. And so, and so, those were my concerns. But you did answer my question, city manager. Thank you so much.
I would just only suggest if Councilman Miller is interested, he could bring that back in front of the council, and we can review that issue at another time. I think now we need to focus on the item ahead of us is to cancel the July third based on what the recommendation was. So, let's do a roll call. Am I making a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Council and agency member Miller?
No.
Council and agency member Burks?
Yes.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizola?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Chair Pacheco?
Aye.
Your motion passes three to one.
Great. Okay, so now we're on public comment, public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine consolidated plan and fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six annual action plan for the community development block grant, CDBG program. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. This item will be presented by administrative analyst two, Harun Nori.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tim, council members, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Harun Nori, and I serve as the administrative analyst for the community development block grant program. Tonight's item for your consideration is a resolution to approve the city's fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-nine consolidated plan in fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six annual action plan. This is the second public hearing on this item. A more detailed presentation was provided to this council earlier this month on June fifth. So, tonight's presentation will be brief and focused on key highlights. To provide a brief overview, as a HUD designated entitlement community, the city of Seaside receives an annual allocation of CDBG funding to support activities that primarily benefit low and moderate income Seaside residents. To remain eligible, HUD requires two key planning documents. The consolidated plan, which is a five-year strategy that sets priorities for housing, public services, and neighborhood improvements. This plan will cover the period of twenty-two-five through twenty-two-nine. The annual action plan, a one-year plan that identifies specific projects and funding allocations to implement the goals of the consolidated plan. The upcoming action plan covers the period of July first, twenty-two-five, through June thirtieth, twenty-two-six, and represents the first year of the implementation. As noted earlier, this item was considered by city council earlier this month on June fifth. City council approved the proposed allocations, which I'll go over in the next slide. This slide shows the proposed allocations for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six based on anticipated CDBG available funding of four hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Four hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars. The first category represents the six public service programs, which will receive a total of sixty-one thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars, which is the maximum allowed under HUD's fifteen-person cap. With each agency receiving ten thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars. The next group of activities represent the public facilities and neighborhood improvement projects with City of Seaside Engineering Department or Public Works Department receiving two hundred forty thousand dollars for ADA curb ramp improvements throughout the city, forty thousand dollars for community human services for facility improvements at Casa de Noche Buena, and fifty thousand dollars to Boys and Girls Club of Monterey County for improvements to the Seaside Clubhouse, bringing the total up to three hundred thirty thousand dollars. In the last category is the planning and administration, which has an allocation of seventy-five thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars. Tonight's recommended action is for the city council to adopt a resolution approving the consolidated plan and the annual action plan, and to authorize the city manager to submit all required plans and documentation to HUD, make minor modifications as needed for compliance, execute required HUD documents in funding agreements, and contract with eligible partners to carry out approved CDBG-funded activities. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you so very much. Does the council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I actually, since community human services is on this list, I have a conflict on this one. So, I'm not voting on this one. I'm sorry, I'm a board member for community human services.
And thank you for your service. Let's go out to the public and as well as a Zoom group gathering.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor Pro Tim, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Okay, let's bring it back to the dais for action, understanding that Councilman Miller won't be half-dead on this one.
Motion to approve item nine A.
Second. Second. And since he can't vote, we can do this by consent. So, still have to do roll call. So, we're going to do roll call because we have to. Let's do a roll call.
Council and agency member Burks?
Aye.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizola?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Chair Pacheco?
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously with one abstention.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, now we're going to go to item B, AB two-five-six-one, presentation report on current job vacancies recruitment and retention efforts. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. This item will be presented by the Human Resources Director, Samantha Serrani.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, council, and members of the public. My name is, can I have a clicker? My name is Samantha Serrani, and I am the HR Director presenting this presentation tonight. It's in compliance with the new legislation and as part of the city's ongoing commitment to effective workforce planning and service delivery. So, in accordance to AB twenty-five-six-one, this evening will provide a brief background, the adoption requirements, the purpose, our current vacancy status, recruitment process. It sounds long, but I promise to keep it short, nice, and sweet. So, the first slide, on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, Governor Newsom signed AB twenty-five-sixty-one and created a new obligation for public agencies to publicly address the status of vacancies. California legislature determined that vacancies are widespread and could be a significant problem due to the fact that vacancies require employees to take on heavier workloads, resulting in burnout, increase, and turnover. The adoption of the bill became effective January first, twenty-twenty-five, which requires agencies to present vacancies and recruitment status at least once per fiscal year, which includes the list and status of current vacancies within departments and bargaining units. Recognized employee, the allowed recognized employee organization for bargaining to make a presentation at the hearing if our vacancy rate exceeds, is twenty or twenty percent more. So, the purpose of this presentation will reflect the current fiscal year twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five from July first to June twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. These are the current vacancies that the city has. There is a typo in the staff report. There's a total of seventeen, not sixteen vacancies out of one hundred and sixty-eight. And this lists the positions that are part of a representative bargaining group. It doesn't list the ones that are non-representative. So, we have the chief building official in our building department, housing program manager, and our safety management employees supervisory association. I listed the acronyms, and I'm sorry about that. Junior engineer, and our Seaside General Employees Association, and Launa Group. And as the list goes down, I won't read them one for one, but basically, the majority of our vacancies in represented groups are in the management group, the Launa Group, and the Police Officers Association. The represented vacancy rate is nine point three, and that's only including the represented bargaining units. So, we listed those bargaining vacancies based, oops, sorry. Can I go ahead? No. So, there are three vacancies in the General Employees Association out of forty-nine allocated positions. In the Fires Association, the number of vacancies is two out of twenty-two allocated funded positions. We have four in the Seaside Management Employees Association out of seventeen approved allocated positions. And the Police Officers Association, we have six out of forty-six. In the Public Safety Management, we have one out of six. So, out of the one hundred sixty-eight, one hundred and forty of them are represented, and we have fifteen vacancies out of those represented positions. Here's the status of the vacancies that we currently have. We have the assistant planner that was open due to an internal promotion. We have the engineer inspector. We underfilled and created that position based off a salary that was approved from a higher position, so it didn't impact the fiscal budget. We have a junior engineer position that is open, housing program manager that is still under review. Before opening the recruitment, we have to iron out a couple of details. Then we have the utilities fill supervisor that was also, became vacant after an internal promotion. We have firefighter positions that are also due to internal promotions. We have a deputy fire chief position that is open due to an internal promotion. We have police officer positions. We have four of them in the final stages of backgrounds. We have a records tech, which we will hold interviews tomorrow. And we have a police services specialist position that we are not going to be opening recruitment because it'll be frozen for the next fiscal year. This is a general overview of our process for recruitment. It does not entail the lengthy process for safety, but all job descriptions are reviewed and updated prior to opening. The position is posted and advertised. We use an online applications tracking system to ensure all candidates are systematically reviewed. HR prescreens all candidates and works with the hiring manager to finalize the screening and interview plan. Candidates are interviewed. Hiring manager selects final candidate after backgrounds, and an offer is made and approved by the city manager. Some of the challenging efforts on what we viewed as one of the most difficult positions is the engineers, which is part of the safety, I'm sorry, which is part of the management supervisors association. And it's very difficult to compete with the private sector. But with our neighboring cities, our salaries study shows that we are either at or above market. So, our salary and compensation is pretty good. We don't have a problem with our competing public sector agencies. We also did have a hiring bonus of thirty thousand dollars for the associate and senior civil engineer, which was approved and passed in twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-five, and I believe it was twenty-two prior. That may be wrong. But we had a lateral bonus pay for police officers at twenty-five, and then later it was up to thirty thousand dollars. So, conclusion, the most important piece of this whole presentation is that seventy percent of our vacancies are due to internal promotions, and thirty percent results in the overturn out of our bargaining units. That concludes my presentation.
Great. Are there any questions of the council? Mr. Miller? Councilman Miller?
No, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. That was really well done. I understand.
Thank you.
And I'm pleased to see the internal promotions. I think that's healthy for our organization to be promoting people internally. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's bring it out to the audience and Zoom friends.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor Pro Tim, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Want to turn it over to our city attorney for a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council, members of the public. Just to make sure that the record is really clear, this hearing was sent to all of the bargaining units. Notice of this hearing was sent on June sixth. So, there have been plenty of notice, and it's my understanding that none of the bargaining units requested to come and make a presentation at tonight's meeting, which they are allowed to do. If they had requested that, we would have been required to allow them to make a presentation tonight. But they did not exercise that right.
Correct. But we do have one of the representatives from the Police Officer Association here. Just want to recognize and thank Stacy for being here tonight. Thank you.
I assume that she has no comments at this time. Thank you so very much. Let's bring it back to the dais for comments or action.
Motion to accept and file report on the status of job vacancies recruitment and retention efforts as required by Government Code, section three-five-zero-two-point-three.
Second.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Council and agency member Miller?
Aye.
Council and agency member Burks?
Aye.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizola?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Chair Pacheco?
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item ten. Operate, adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty-two-five-six operating budget, investment policy, capital improvement program fees, schedule position, control list, salary schedule, strategic plan, and reserve amounts, and provide direction to staff as to changes to be made prior to adoption. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and council. This item will continue our budget discussions for potential adoption of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Next slide, please. Brief introduction, as we started this process on June tenth with the city council, the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget reflected a total of forty-eight point three million in operating revenues and expenditures, including transfers yielding only a modest projected surplus of approximately sixty thousand. The budget included two point seven million in capital allocations with six hundred and twenty-five thousand set aside to directed capital improvement projects and two million dollars set aside specifically for street maintenance and repair. To reach this balanced outcome for the original proposed draft budget, staff worked diligently over the past forty-five to sixty days to reduce department budget requests before it came to council by approximately four point six million dollars. This involved making tough internal necessary adjustments, including freezing twenty positions and leaving staffing levels roughly eleven percent below optimal. I want to take a moment and acknowledge and express how truly proud I am of city staff for working in a team effort to address this financial challenge with the proposed budget. That said, when presenting this budget to the city council, we still faced a challenge of an unassigned negative fund balance projected approximately one point seven million short of the thirty percent reserve requirement set in our municipal code. Budget workshops were held on June tenth and June twelfth to discuss and review departmental expenditures. Several options to address the negative unassigned fund balance were presented to the city council, who ultimately approved a motion for staff to proceed with the budget preparation as presented on June twelfth. And to dive deeper into the budget, I'll call on finance- And to dive deeper into the budget, I'll call on finance director Jessica Riley to discuss where we're at.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Tonight I'm presenting the revised fiscal fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, twenty six budget. As the city manager noted, we started this budget cycle with a unique challenge. So while we had a balanced operating budget showing a modest surplus of about sixty thousand, we were projecting a negative unassigned fund balance of approximately one point seven five million, which meant we were not meeting our reserve policy of thirty percent of annual expenditures. This required thoughtful decision-making and collaboration between staff and council to align the budget with both fiscal policy and council priorities. So the focus wasn't just to balance the budget for the upcoming year, but also to ensure that our unassigned fund balance, essentially the city's rainy day fund, was brought back into the positive and aligned with the policy requirements. The council adopted two key strategies to close the gap, which are shown on this slide. That was to defer capital projects and the second to reduce general fund transfers to streets, spreading the change over two years. More specifically, those decisions included deferring the Hillby Storm Drain Project and the Fab Lab Capital Project, and reducing the scheduled transfers to streets funds by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand and twenty, twenty four, twenty five, and two thousand and twenty five, twenty six. And this column shows at the bottom of the slide, the positive unassigned fund balance we achieved over three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. This slide, the next slide summarizes where we started and the two key goals we aim to achieve in developing this budget. First, to maintain a structurally balanced budget where projected revenues are greater than the planned expenditures for the coming year. And second, to restore a positive unassigned fund balance, which means we're maintaining enough reserves to meet the city's policy target of thirty percent of expenditures. And as we stated at the beginning of the process, we had a small operating surplus of fifty nine thousand, but our unassigned fund balance was negative by approximately one point seven five million, meaning we did not meet those reserves initially. So in the column showing the unassigned fund balance on the left, you can see the impact of council's actions during the study sessions. Most notably, around two point one million in adjustments that significantly improved our reserve position. Additional refinements, both reductions and additions resulting in a final unassigned fund balance of approximately three hundred and eighteen thousand is displayed at the bottom of that column. And the operating surplus column to the right, a few small changes based on council priorities and technical corrections. Bought the surplus down slightly to below forty eight thousand, but it remains balanced. Overall, this reflects a successful collaborative effort between council and staff to meet both financial goals. And the next few slides will go over in more detail on the specific changes and corrections that got us here. After the study session, we continued refining the budget based on council's direction and updated information. A few examples of this includes the lease on six five, six fifty six Broadway, our satellite office that was formerly where Seaside Crates was based out of. We ended that lease and are projected to save forty two thousand dollars. Council also prioritized new spending in a few key areas. Twenty nine thousand for state lobbyists, fifteen thousand for city contracted services for the city clerk's office. An additional three thousand and five hundred for both the Parks Recreation Committee and the community, community safety advisory commission, and thirteen thousand for recreation events and transfers totaling two hundred and fifty thousand to the Laguna Grande Park project for the installation of an AstroTurf lawn using unspent short-term rental funds from the NIC in combination with the total allocation of short-term rental funds for council's discretionary use. And on the next slide is just a few staff proposed final corrections that supported the same overall financial picture. There is a reduction in the Seaside Stars capital project in the amount of ten thousand. Because this is a capital project funded from the unassigned fund balance, this change freed up additional reserves. Also, work to improve the outdoor space at the preschool was completed in the current year, so we reduced next year's related expenditures by ten thousand. Other budget categories like travel and training for the recreation department were reviewed and found to be adequate and were left unchanged. So in addition to, in addition to these financial changes, staff made some technical and administrative updates. We clarified program names, removing the A from the STEM program. We corrected the fire station number two design costs reported accurately to seven hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred. The community safety advisory commission name was updated. Strategic plan alignment was added throughout the document. And workers' compensation and liabilities allocations were adjusted to add more weight to public safety. We also updated our streets funding policy, now stating that thirty percent of any projected surplus at mid-year will go towards street operations or pavement rehabilitation rehabilitation in the following year in addition to the MOE. And this page is just a summary of the revised proposed budget. Revenues are totaling forty eight point three million, expenditures at forty eight point two million, giving us an operating surplus that's forty seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty seven dollars. The use of the fund balance is one point eight million dollars. The unassigned fund balance resulting is three hundred and eighteen thousand. And we met two, two of our major goals, a balanced budget and a compliant reserve level. So staff also has a few follow-ups. For the next follow-up, I'm going to ask Public Works Director Thomas Corman to give an overview of our maintenance of our PCI for streets.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council. So for the follow-up with the PCI or pavement condition index, with limited funding, this is our strategy for addressing deficiencies in the funding and the reduction of funding. So first is making improvements basically part of our regular street operations. Okay. So in this, you know, this year of limited funding, basically we'll be bringing those in-house, those hotspots that are, that are basically larger than a dig out, maybe two hundred to four hundred square feet. Could be even up to a half of a, of a, a street segment in a residential neighborhood and performing that in-house. Basically with the use of the new equipment, which is the second bullet point, and that is the asphalt zipper. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this is a piece of equipment much like a grinder, but it grinds in place while adding additives to it, either cement or lime leaving in place. So it reduces basically the amount of off-haul that we have to do and then we pave in place. In addition to that, you'll see that the short-term impact, if we were have to have zero funding, we ran our models, which we use Street Saver, which is a common pavement condition index program used by local agencies up in the Bay Area in Southern California, as well as on the Monterey Peninsula. Our current conditions is that we're sitting at a fifty-three. Basically, the deferred maintenance for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, if we absolutely put nothing into the streets, would just be dropped down to a fifty-two. So it's almost like we'd be treading water. However, that, that is not exactly the case of what will happen. So with the use of the, the asphalt zipper and the improvements that we'll bring in-house, we'll probably still bid some of the larger projects and streets that need them. As you heard in a prior presentation, we'll have the CBDG funding that will focus on the curb ramps and will allow us to move forward with street construction using those funds that are in there. And prep the work for further slurry, slurry seals, a type one or type two, or further micro-surfacing in future years. So when I said treading water, fifty-three to a fifty-two, we'll probably hold at a fifty-three or even go up. Because as we make the improvements to individual street sections, we'll be doing evaluations, entering those back into the street server, Street Saver model, and then running our model again, which will set us up and tell us what streets we need to evaluate for future slurry seals, which is that preventative maintenance, much like painting a street. But it's much more because we have not just color, but emulsions in that. Okay. So basically the investment that we're making in the equipment and the crews and the, the training and doing them in-house, just basically summarized by this last point, that even in a tight budget, we have a strategy moving forward so that we won't lose ground on our street network system. So.
I'll just move on with the other follow-ups, which there's only one or two slides and then we'll have questions at the end. And on this slide, in continuing the follow-up on, from public work, public works about our street maintenance, I just wanted to add that we do have a long-term commitment for streets funding. Since two thousand and eighteen, the city has allocated over eighteen million dollars to the street rehabilitation project. That includes all five, five phases and includes ten million from a two thousand and eighteen bond measure. The general fund continues to support ongoing operations and maintenance. And our updated fiscal policy ensures that when possible, thirty percent of future surpluses will go toward additional street improvements. So lastly, I have a few other updates related to the proposed fee schedule. The license fee for unaltered pets will now be forty dollars. And this clarifies how we'll implement the ten dollar fee for members of the public who do not choose not to spay or neuter their animal. But just for clarification, altered pets will remain at thirty dollars. So that's no change from the proposed twenty five, twenty six fee. And for senior citizens, for all pets will remain at eleven dollars with no change. And just to note, if documentation is provided by veterinarian that disqualifies the pet from needing to be altered, then the altered pet fee will be applied. And sick, lastly, the garage sale permit is staff proposes reducing the fee from twenty-four to fifteen dollars. So tonight's staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six operating budget. Investment policy, capital improvement program, fee schedule, position control list, salary schedule, strategic plan, and reserve amounts and provide direction to staff as to any changes that may be made prior to adoption. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
Just a brief comment and we'll open up the questions. Just want to make the public aware, the council spent probably ten to twelve hours in study sessions of asking some tough questions and as we evaluated the, the budget and we probably also spent ten to twenty hours individually preparing for the, for the council questions. And then staff spent, I imagine hundreds of hours as a team. Coming forth with the recommendations, suggestions, reducing the budget. So it was a unified effort as far as getting where you got, where we, we are today. So if there's, you know, there'll be questions, I'm sure, but I think a lot of the meat and potatoes of the goulash has been, has gone through the process and, and just wanted to thank, and I'm sure everybody doesn't love everything about this budget. But in the sake of compromise, I think there was a lot of compromise throughout. That's just a comment that I want only one person later. Any questions? Mr. Miller, give you the opportunity?
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you to the finance director for the presentation. But she said during one of the slides that thirty percent, we're going to reduce it to thirty percent for the roads. I thought we were at half with that. So before, I think our code, we'd do fifty percent of, is that correct?
That's correct. Based on, um, council's comments about the amount and considering the constraint and the need for funding our streets, staff proposes rather than go back to twenty-five percent, which was the level at which that policy was originally adopted in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, to just raise it a little bit to thirty percent.
I see. By chance, is there a dollar amount on that five percent? I, I don't want, we don't have to spend any time on it, but if you know that dollar amount is a.
No, it would depend on what the projected surplus is at any given year. So yeah, I mean, when the policy was adopted, the surplus, I think, was near three million dollars. And so the allocation was probably close to eight hundred thousand dollars. And in the past fiscal year, the surplus was only about two million dollars. And so fifty percent of that was one million. So it'll always vary based on the surplus.
No, I understand. I guess I was asking for this, but this year, but that's okay. And I had a question for Mr. Thomas as well regarding the street, the Street Saver program that we use. Is that also the program that our consultant, the Joe, does he use, I think Joe Riley, does he use the Street Saver program as well?
That's correct. We have multiple logins to the, the same program. That's it. It's a, it's a pretty common payment management system used throughout the state and throughout the country. Yes.
Yeah. And so, so we're basically projecting we're only going to lose one percent, one point, basically. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's really helpful to have that because that, that, that kind of changes my, you know, I, I think now, I mean, we're not, this isn't going to drastically, this doesn't change by, you know, ten percent or five percent, one percent difference, but we need to make up for that difference in the future. Thank you for that. And then my last question was to the city attorney. And, and my question to the city attorney is, you know, I'm having a hard time with this spay and neuter thing. I, 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 I thought it was, it was my understanding that, that part of the ordinance we passed prohibited people from having unaltered animals. Am I, am I missing something here?
No, you are correct. However, the ordinance does make a provision for those animals and those folks who do not want their animals spayed or neutered. And so the fee schedule reflects that some people may come in and wish to register an unaltered animal, in which case we are going to charge a higher fee because we will be doing additional services relative to tracking the requirements for that unaltered animal, whether that is additional veterinary certifications, database and follow-up on those animals. So that's how the staff resolved the very confusing extra ten dollar fee as we just rolled it up into the unaltered state.
But that's, that's not what the finance director just said. The finance director just said, and, and the way I understood this, is that if somebody comes in with an unaltered animal, they pay forty dollars. But if they're one of the exclusions, then like a vet says, or the three exclusions, then they pay the altered price of thirty dollars. Did I miss that?
No. So that acknowledges that if you come in and you have it, you basically have an excuse. Your vet says your animal, there's some medical reason your animal cannot be altered. It's too sick. It's, you know, there's, there's a limited set of circumstances that we built into the ordinance to allow that to happen. And in that case, the ten dollar fee is waived and you just are charged the registry, the, the normal registration of thirty dollars because we're not going to track the animal in the same way.
So who pays the forty dollars?
People who come in with unaltered animals that want to keep their animal unaltered.
But I thought that the, the, our ordinance prohibited that.
It doesn't prohibit it all the way. We are.
I know the three, the three section, then, then they, they reduce the fee ten dollars and pay thirty dollars. So who pays the forty dollars? I don't.
No, that's the exception. Counsel member Miller respectfully through the chair. That's the exception is when you come in with a doctor's note, you can waive the ten dollar, extra ten dollar fee. If you don't have a doctor's note, you come in and your animal is unaltered and you haven't gotten it spayed or neutered, then you're paying the forty bucks.
I understand. So your dog still has to be one of the exceptions, but you just don't have proof of the exception.
Correct.
But you're not allowed to have an unaltered dog in our city unless you have one of the exceptions. Is that correct?
No, there are, there are other exceptions. So if you get a breeder's permit, for example, you can have an unaltered pet. And in which case you would go get a breeder's permit on top of your unaltered animal certificate license. So there there are other exceptions, council member, that would warrant the $40 fee.
I understand now. Thank you for answering those questions. That that helps a lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm all done.
Thank you. Just a question, because maybe I misunderstood, and it's more from the public works perspective. If I heard you, and then I'll have one for the city manager, then I'll be done. If I heard you correctly, the with the machinery, instead of going to minus one, as I believe you said, it's either going to break even or go a teeny bit above 0.5 above the I'm making 0.5 up, but it's not going to be minus one. It's going to be even or 0.5 above. Let's just use that as.
That's exactly correct. Yeah, that's exactly correct. Because the model that we ran was exactly with putting zero into the network.
Thank you. So. And then just to clarify, just to make it a question, I think you can answer this too, if not the finance director. The the wisdom of of the council or the saw the light with council staff came in with 25% as far as the mid-year budget. We raised it to 30%. That may do another slurry or two or whatever it be, because we understood the need and the residents' concerns regarding street improvements. So when going to the 25 back, we tweaked it up to 30 to maximize dollars to maximize road improvements. Is that a fair statement?
I believe that's fair. Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for the public, we're staying even or above above. And we're coming back with 30%, which is above the recommended 25 because staff made some good insights as well as the council members. I'm sorry, any questions? We've gone through that process already, going it out to the public and our Zoom friends.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Linda Cunningham, member of the homeless commission, speaking as a private citizen. You guys all did such a great job. I mean, the workshops were hard. I I can't do a family budget. I'm on the no budget budget, save 10%, spend the rest. So I'm very impressed. I I think the decisions, I know you all wish we had more money. I know if you had more money, you'd fix every street. I do have to say, my sister lives in Eureka, in the city of Eureka, the citizens voted to tax themselves so they could repair every street. I don't know if the citizens of Seaside would vote for that, but we do have an electric car and and there's no gas tax going on those electric cars. And there's going to be more electric cars. I'm not sure what the plan is there. It's kind of nice that we don't pay that tax. And once you get an electric car, I mean, it's nice, except like when you wash the windows? Because you're never going to a gas station. You're never getting your oil changed. But I I do appreciate all the work that everybody did. It's just really quite amazing. I'm really excited about the alligator or the zipper or whatever that dang thing's called. I'm very excited about it. I actually, whatever the week it was, two weeks ago, I just read a story about using recycled plastic product with those zippers. The plastic doesn't leach out. It's a way of using this way too much plastic that we have. I did give it to the gentleman who was here from that department because I was just, wow, like, I just read this story today about this cool way of using plastic. And they're testing it all over the country. They're using a lot of plastic roads in India. Anyways, it's all very exciting. And again, the city of Seaside, just so impressive, everybody here. I wish more people would show, the complainers would show up and see that you guys are really doing all the hard work and you're not just, I don't know what they think you guys are doing, sitting around painting your toenails. I don't know, never got my toenails painted at City Hall. But I do appreciate all the work everybody's doing because it really does show. And it's really hard and and, oh, my God, God bless the accountants. They're the bean counters, but thank you very much. It's not easy to do. And they were all tough decisions. And I think, based on my limited information, I think you made really good decisions. And thank you very much.
Okay.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor Protem, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Okay, let's bring it back to the dais for comments or action.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Why don't you hit it one more time? Let's do a roll call, folks.
Council and agency member Miller.
Aye.
Council and agency member Burks.
Aye.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizola.
Aye.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Barcheco.
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 11, councilman requests, council member request, I'm sorry. Are there any council member requests? Seeing none. Follow up on previous request.
Yeah, just one update, Mayor Protem. Following the Home Key proposal, councilmember Garcia Arizola requested us to look into our unsolicited development proposal policy. And so that work continues. We're hopeful that we'll really provide an update on that at one of the next two meetings.
Thank you. See, this is the time for, I believe, city attorney, city manager, city council reports and comments. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do not have anything new to report tonight.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. I do have just a few items. First, I just want to say publicly, thank you to our bargaining units. One of the consent agenda items on this agenda was five side letter agreements with all extending our bargaining agreements with all of our units. So I want to thank those representatives, especially coming from a new city manager who's been just jumping into this and the budget issues. I appreciate their efforts there. I also want to just echo the budget, thank you to staff. This was a very complex budget. Every department made sacrifices, so I really appreciate the teamwork and specifically Jessica Riley and her finance team for for all of the hard work on this budget. The main gate RFP for a 50-acre mixed-use development was released on Friday, June 20. It will open on August 22. And so the information is available on our website for a very large development property for the city of Seaside. And then finally, I did have the opportunity to attend the International Town and Gown Association Annual Conference on June 1 through the 6. I was elected president of that organization. The organization is aimed at best practices between institutions of higher education and the communities in which they reside. There's a lot of difficult conversations happening nationally right now in that space. And so I look forward to helping lead that organization and also using that platform to help benefit our partnership here in Seaside with CSU MB and Monterey Peninsula College. That's all at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and congratulations to our city manager for becoming the president of that organization. And and we we certainly look forward to strengthening our relationship here with our colleges. So congratulations on that. I I was able to attend my Ambag meeting via Zoom. I appeared. There is some some more money coming through that jurisdictions. Seaside's been working diligently with Ambag, so thank you to the staff for that. And to the to the finance, you know, we, this is my now my third, third cycle of going through it. And I I think this was one of the one of the stronger ones. And and we really, the the outline on the presentations made a lot of sense. And and so as we get better every year, I think that's important. So congratulations to the to the finance team and and job well done. I I am returning back into Seaside next week. And so I look forward to seeing everybody at the red, white and blues celebration here in the city of Seaside on on July 4. And I will be there and look forward to seeing everybody. And since we don't have a meeting on July 3, I will say happy 4th of July to the city of Seaside and all of our residents. And I look forward to seeing everybody when I return. Thank you very much. And also thank you to the city clerk for allowing me to appear via Zoom and working with me via Zoom and always being there for any questions or problems that I had. So thank you to the staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and that was all.
Thank you. Councilperson Burks.
I attended Juneteenth celebration by the Monterey County Black Caucus on June 14, which was a huge celebration. I also am on the board of the DWMC, and so I was able to be part of here are very own Yvonne Thomas. There you do a speaker series every month, and it was on the power of media and storytelling. And right now, being, needing to be in community even more so with a lot of change and disruption going on in our government. And then I was able to be part of the ribbon cutting at Deja Blue. He now has a larger room where you can run out for events as well as a garden in the back. I won't say what kind of garden, but that you can have multiple events going on. And so it's a great place for our citizens to get out there and to connect as well. So that was what I did. Thank you.
Councilmember Burks.
Okay, but sure, I also attended the Juneteenth celebration alongside. I think all of us went there. It was a well-attended event. I think it keeps getting better and better every year. And I want to thank the Monterey County Black Caucus for putting that together. I think it showcases the diversity that we have in our community, but also the strength of Seaside and who we are and how we embrace that in today's day, which is very important. And I also want to thank our finance director for such an amazing job. You're diligent and you make sure to keep us on track. I think we wouldn't be able to move this city without you. So I really do want to thank you and all the department heads for making an effort. And as I mentioned last time, we are facing some budget difficulties, not only at a local level, but at a state and a national level as well. So I think this council is very much committed to ensuring that no one is left behind, but we're still taking care of the duties and the necessities of our everyday responsibilities in the city of Seaside. So thank you. And thank you, city manager, for a first budget session with us.
Thank you. Attended the Monterey Slade Transit Meeting, the budget was approved. Lobbyists for MST provided updates and answered questions and made community aware. And also the MST board was made aware of the groundbreaking for the Surf Project. It's on Saturday, June 28 at 2:00 PM. I as well attended the Juneteenth. Thanks for all the organizers and sponsors to make that event successful. Attended the Friends of Seaside Parks cleanups at Lincoln Cunningham and Capra. The parks continued to get better with the help of Fosfa and the residents. I attended the Fosfa Park Tour the following day. It's really exciting to see the dramatic improvements over the past five, six years, 10 years of Fosfa's involvement and cooperation with the city to make our parks of greater use to the public. And I attended the farmer's market last Thursday, and we have been very concerned about their people attending. And last Thursday, that's been the largest crowd that I've seen over the past year. More vendors, they had a beer booth, they had music. Just the amount of vendors, the amount of people was, I was very surprised, very happy. And it was, hopefully, they can continue in that movement as we go through the summer. And again, thanks for all those that were involved with the budget process. And just hope everybody has a good 4th of July, be safe. And please, no illegal fireworks or minimize it if we can. I know the police will be out there in force to do what they can, but it takes the residents to watch over our residents. So please, let's follow the law, no illegal fireworks. That helps all of us sleep well, take care of our dogs and and be responsible residents. And at this time, I'm going to ask the city attorney, I believe, to read us into closed session, if that's correct.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council, members of the public. The council will have a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Property in question is commonly referred to as Campus Town. Agency negotiators are the city manager at all negotiating parties, KBB, Seaside Venture and the city of Seaside under negotiation price terms of payment or both. They will have a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Property in question is Golf Course Hotel Parcel located at 1 McClure Way, Seaside, California. Agency negotiators, city manager and city attorney, negotiating parties, city of Seaside and KDG under negotiation price terms of payment or both. They will have a conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section 54956.9 on three matters of existing litigation. The first matter is Monterey County Superior Court case number 24CV002483. Case name is Land Watch and Center for Biological Diversity versus City of Seaside. The second case case number is 24CV2872. The case name is Seaside Highlands Homeowners Associations versus City of Seaside. The third case is Monterey County Superior Court case number 25CV001036. The case name is the city of Seaside versus Seaside Highlands Homeowners Association. And finally, they will have conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2 on potential, two matters of potential litigation. Only one matter will actually be discussed tonight. And for the benefit of the public, I do not expect there to be any reportable action taken coming out of closed session this evening.
Thank you. Go out to the public for comments on these items, closed session items.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor Protem, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to adjourn to closed session. Thank.